The November 11th, 2021 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight our invocation will be led by District Six Councilman, Mr. Steve Pertle. Please rise.
I'll bow please. The Lord, we want to thank you for this day and what it represents. It means more than us just being up here. It means the veterans that have sacrificed and given all for us to be up here. I hope we can honor that and honor them in this tradition by doing their will and honoring the citizens of this town and making the decisions that are right for them and for the previous councils and the future councils to come. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Tonight in employee recognition, I'm going to recognize Sally Forbus, Municipal Court Administrator for 40 years. Sally Forbus began her career with the City of Longview on November 1st, 1981 as a dispatcher for the Longview Police Department. In October of 1982, she was promoted to shift supervisor. Through the following years, she was given an increasing level of responsibility, which included managing the user side of the computer-aided dispatch system and the hiring and training of new dispatchers. In July of 2000, she was promoted to Public Safety Communications Manager. As a communications manager, Ms. Forbus was responsible for the purchase and implementation of the new 911 telephone system and a $6 million expansion and upgrade on the city's 80 megahertz radio system. In June of 2007, she became a graduate of Stephen F. Austin State University, a certified public manager program, and in October 2007, a graduate of Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service Lead Academy at the University of Virginia. December 2010, she transferred to Municipal Court as a court administrator. In 2012, the Texas County Clerk Association presented Ms. Forbus with the Distinguished Service Award. Ms. Forbus implemented mandatory training standards for all court staff, requiring Kirk certification through the Texas Municipal Court Education Center and the Texas Court Clerk Association. In March 2017, she became the 71st person in the state of Texas to become a Level Three Certified Municipal Court Clerk, which is the highest level of clerk certification offered in Texas. On November 1st, 2021, Ms. Forbus celebrated 40 years of service with the City of Longview. She decided after 40 years, now is a good time to retire. All of that and she's going to retire? No, no, no. Oh, my gosh. Ms. Forbus' last day will be December 31st. No, not happening. Forget that, we're moving on to the next thing. Ms. Forbus, please come forward.
Seriously, I thought I was going to give you your 40-year pin and you're going to go get a 50-year pin. Come on, Sally. Listen, I can't tell you how much you've meant to the City of Longview. 40 years is a lifetime. It's an eternity, but your service is exemplary and you've done it with such pride and such grace and through the years, you've made so many changes that have affected our city in such a positive way. So, we thank you so much. This 40-year pin is for you, but it's the service you provide that really means the most to us. We thank you for your service and we wish you the best in your retirement and we're going to miss you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I have one speaker card, Larry James Smith.
Can I speak now, sir?
Yes, sir. You have three minutes, sir.
My name is Larry James Smith. I reside at 2306 Nixon Drive, Longview, Texas, in the heart of the Southern District of Three, Longview, Texas. I'm hosting an event on the 13th of November honoring our veterans that are still with us and those who have fallen and passed on. However, the ones that are with us are in a desperate need of upgrading their ability to access their data through the DSL login. By being able to do that, they can better serve themselves, better have a connection with the military, the VA hospitals, pardon me, I haven't written this down, so I'm coming off the top of my head. My program, which is Intola, which sponsors mixed-traffic mentoring men, ages 13 to 35, is going to be assisted by those veterans that I move forward in technology and helping them learn that technology to the best of their ability to sign in by themselves, to look at their records, to be able to see what kind of medication they're, and to order it, also to see their appointment schedules, not only that, to do for travel pay, benefits, submit for benefits. You can also pull up your D-214, end the login, and that's the way the VA is pushing veterans to go. More veterans in Longview, Gray County area, do not know how to do it. They are suffering. I'm an observer and I watch the reaction of men when they go to the hospital at the VA. They are despaired, they are not trusting because of so much complications. I'm fortunate to say that I made a small contribution that made an impact. I created a PowerPoint presentation, step-by-step, logging into DSL, explaining each one of them and why you do that, creating a username, making sure that the photo that they choose in the beginning of their setting up a profile, they have to use it continuously. And they don't know that. And I put that in that PowerPoint presentation and luckily, it was shared over a virtual town meeting. I really would like for everyone to embrace the sympathy of their heart and give it to these veterans. They have done their best. They have served the country and to come home and not be treated with health care the way they should be treated, as if they were still on the battleground, it is disheartening the way they are being treated right now and what they have to do. Intola will help them. Not only help them, they will walk with them all the way till they get logged in and make sure that they can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have no other speaker card for the public safety update. Chief Bishop is not here tonight. Chief Steelman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight a few things that have happened since our last council meeting in the fire department. First off, we would like to congratulate firefighter and paramedic John Hargis, who retired from the fire department in this interim time with 23 years of service. We wish him well and a happy and healthy retirement as he moves on to new adventures. We'd also like to congratulate our EMS section chief, Amy Hooton. Amy became the fifth member of our fire department to complete the Texas A&amp;M Fire Service Chief Executive Fire Officer Program, so we're very proud of her for that. And that training will serve her well as she continues up the ranks in the fire department. You might have noticed here over the course of the past couple of weeks, a lot of activity out on JC Drive on the backside of the Fairgrounds complex. The city had acquired four or five houses out there that were scheduled to be demolished. And I would like to thank Development Services and Public Works, who kind of pumped the brakes on the demolition of those houses and allowed us the opportunity to get in and do some live, hands-on training and get some tool time with some of our newer firefighters. We're kind of in a stay of transition right now with our training field being in the midst of moving from one location to the other. So, these five houses, before they had a bulldozer run through them, provided an excellent training opportunity to go out and get some live, hands-on training with our crews. All of our crews, all of our stations, had the opportunity to rotate through and really get some valuable training time in, day and night, so that was very valuable to us. Recently, the East Texas Arson Investigator Conference took place. It was the 37th annual one of these. It's been in Longview all 37 times. It's a great networking opportunity for our own fire investigators in the Longview Fire Department to catch up on new trends and new techniques and new science in the fire investigation and arson investigation world and to network with people from all across the states. So, we're always happy to host that and have those people come into the town and share their knowledge with us. I had the opportunity this week to have two new firefighters start with us, Gunner Michelley, hired in as a firefighter/paramedic, and Joshua Barnes, starting out as a fire apprentice. Gunner comes to us from the Nacogdoches area and Gunner, Joshua actually comes to us by way of Columbus, Ohio, so he's traveled a ways to be here. We're proud to have both of these guys on board with us. They started their three-week orientation program and then we'll be putting them out on the street. I'd like to congratulate firefighter/paramedic Nick Jones of Station 3 C-Shift. Nick was awarded a unit citation award. Nick is one of those quiet guys that's always working in the background. He's got a lot of specialized knowledge in electronics and emergency vehicle lighting and a lot of the technology that's in our fire apparatus and our EMS equipment out there, and he's always willing to step up and he's done a lot of work for us lately, so he was very deserving of that unit citation award. So, congratulations to Nick. You might have seen this on the news last night, we had several of our firefighter-medics that were recognized by Parkland Hospital in Dallas with a lifesaver award. These two crews participated in the life-saving of a patient here in Longview that had been electrocuted and went into cardiac arrest. Also recognized with them was the flight crew that got him from Longview to Dallas to Parkland Hospital. So, we'd like to recognize Robert Collins, Garrett Miller, Jake Robertson, Chris Gray, and Trent Montgomery for their exceptional effort of saving that person's life. And our EMS, our ambulance subscription program is open as always this time of year. That will close on December 31st, so if you've not received a mailing reminding you to renew that, or if you're interested in getting involved with it for the first time, that opportunity is now available, so don't hesitate to reach out and call 237-1232 for further questions. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Steelman?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to be there working out tomorrow?
Oh, no. Getting that tire with the sledgehammer.
Okay.
I'll meet you out there.
All right. Chief, thank you and thank you for the innovative, creative way of getting your firemen trained with Development Services. That was a fantastic endeavor and it served purposes for everyone involved. Great idea, great job, great... Michael, thanks y'all for helping and all that. And I know you have to go to an event tonight with the city, so please leave. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're now at a consent agenda. Any items council like pulled off for separate discussion?
Yes. One more, Mary Ann, item C.
Item C, any others? Okay, well, would you like to address item C, Mr. Pertle?
On our deal on the computer, there wasn't any readout or anything. What did we change on this or add on this that had to be brought back to us?
Okay, my apologies. It may not have come across correctly, but I had sent redlined changes and a memo in that same email that explained the changes, but most of them are minor, having to do with changes in Texas state law that occurred during the last legislative session and things that we needed to update based on that. The biggest one probably is, or the two biggest are going to be catastrophic leave policy and the holiday policy. So, for catastrophic leave, this is a policy that was set by council back in 2002. It's been on the books since then, but originally, it was intended to be a policy leave-sharing bank program for employees that have life-threatening illnesses or injuries that have run out of their accruals, but have a span of 90 days to get to the long-term disability policy that we have. And so, it was intended to bridge that gap. Over the years, through numerous iterations and changes before council, it has grown into a much larger policy that allows more things. And so, the request was to limit that policy back down to the original intent of 2002, to just go back to life-threatening illnesses and injuries and bridging that gap from loss of accruals to long-term disability coverage. And then, the holiday policy is just adding the Juneteenth holiday, following the federal government.
Okay. Well, but like I said, mine wasn't readied out, so I couldn't tell.
My apologies.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Carpenter?
Mary Ann, congratulations.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
No difference.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Agreed.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now to zoning, have a public hearing, application PD 21-03. Hello, Ms. Choi.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Bonds. The applicant is requesting a planned development, a zoning change, from single-family four to planned development for a private school with a daycare located at 1237 Peggy's Place. The existing facility was the former Forest Park Middle School on the north side of Peggy's Place. It was purchased by another school and eventually, Longview Christian School purchased this property. Currently, the daycare for Longview Christian School is across the street on the south side of this property, or on the south side of Peggy's, and they would like to move the daycare to the north side to make more room for the school. The site includes an existing structure that is approximately 4,000 square feet in size with a soccer field and a baseball field. They are proposing to add a parking lot with approximately 109 parking spaces. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
No difference.
Second?
Second.
We have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing, application S-21-12, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. And the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for one-family dwellings in heavy commercial zoning district. A specific use permit is required for one-family dwellings in heavy commercial zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. There are currently one-family dwellings or single-family dwelling units located on the north side of Meadowview Drive and multifamily dwellings located on the south side of Meadowview and to the east of this property. The applicant would like to subdivide this lot into two lots and develop two single-family dwellings. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held, application Z-21-17?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for an existing one-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district. As stated previously, one-family dwelling districts are not allowed in heavy commercial, thus requiring a specific use permit to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. This is an existing neighborhood. There are several one-family dwelling units located to the northwest and south of this neighborhood. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, but I'm, excuse me, I said 17 and it's 13 on our agenda. I want to make that correction so we're on the right one. It requires a public hearing. Any questions, Ms. Choi? If not, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now, we are to S-21-17, Ms. Choi.
Z-21-17, I'm sorry. The applicant is requesting a rezone for Lot 14, Block 1 of East Magnolia Edition, located on Revelin Avenue, east of Eastman Road and north of Osborne Street. The applicant would like to expand the existing facility, which is a storage facility. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This also requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions or comments, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. We're now to action item, consider all matters incident related to the issues of a sale of City of Longview General Obligation Bonds. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm John Martin with Hilltop Securities. I'll be brief this evening. This is the second of a series from the 2018 voter-authorized bonds where there was a variety of projects by the voters of Longview. And we're here tonight to report that we had a fantastic sale into the bond market yesterday. Despite the fact that the 10-year treasury went up almost 10 basis points in one day, the underwriters did a super job in pre-marketing on Tuesday and were able to hold those orders yesterday morning when they went out. So, there's a variety of items in this. Do I go through this? You got me? Okay, there it is. So, you can see the overall debt service, existing payments and overall payments with the new debt coming on, the existing payments to your left and going up to 2039, and the new bonds that come on that are 20-year bonds. Overall, we've kept it level payment schedule, plus or minus $5,000 because they're sold in $5,000 increments. So, about a million 906 average, and the average rate turned out to be 2.08%. So, while rates are rising a little bit, they're still crazy low to be able to borrow it for 20 years at that low rate. We've estimated and projected, if you'll look on the far right-hand column, the interest and sinking fund tax rates, and we know what the tax rates have been the last couple of years. We're projecting the INS tax rate, just assuming a very modest increase in the tax base, to go up about two pennies as a result. Now, it could be more or less than that depending on what that is, but the most important thing I can tell you tonight is that's more than three cents less than what was told the voters. So, when we went out to, we expected the second series of bonds to be pushing a 20-cent tax rate on the INS side. Remember, you have your INS tax rate and your MNO tax rate for a combined tax rate. The INS can only be used to pay debt. So, overall, you all are keeping your promise to the voters, more so than we had ever hoped. So, we've been helped by lower interest rates, continued growth, and staying on track here. The book that we put before you, I will not go through. You can refer to it and if you have any questions, ask Angela or Mr. Bonds and they know how to find me and Michael. Yeah, thank you for taking me through the Bond Buyers Index here. This shows you a trend of where rates have gone since 2007, and overall, it's averaged out at 3.84%, and we really started to strike a real lowering there, as you see in 2019, and it's just been bouncing off the bottom from there. Take the next one. And these are some, kind of a fun slide here that shows you things that have happened since July of 2020, the cost changes in tax-exempt interest rate. The MMD is municipal market data. That's an index that's used in our industry as an index to determine rates for bonds. So, different challenges, as you see, when the Fed speaks or something happens in Washington, it usually has some sort of cause and effect, right? So, this happens, but as you can see, we're still remaining extremely low interest rates. So, great time to borrow money, not such a good time to have fixed-income investments because they're not giving you much of a return. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any question, Mr. Martin? First off, I want to say, great job in the sales and all that. To go from what we expected of 19 cents to 16 cents is a great win for us, and like you say, we're keeping our word to the voters and that's what we plan to do. So, thank you for your hard work and all that you all do. You guys are great. We appreciate you so much. Any questions?
One question.
Yes, sir.
So, these are all fixed-interest rates for the life of the bond unless we can refinance a lower rate?
Yeah, good luck with that, but they are fixed-rate bonds, and yeah, they're not, you're locked in as of tonight. You approve this and it's a done deal for 20 years. So, you do have a call feature on there for 10, you have a 10-year lockout that's typical in the tax-exempt bond market where you have to give the investor call protection, if you will, that he's going to know that he's going to have that yield for at least 10 years, and then we can take those bonds out from under him if it's our choice.
How much more do we have to borrow still?
Dollar 98.
I think it's about 25 million. About 25 million left at the authorization, that's right.
But this is a good 25 million here because we're really almost getting 30 million for our 25 million.
Yeah, it's the way that the bonds are sold and the premium and so forth. So, you see those 5% rates there that you're paying, but the investment community's giving that money back to you upfront to give you the 30.
Right, we're getting upfront at almost 30 million, right? Right at 30 million.
Yeah, you'll get 30,270,000 deposited in the bank on December 7th.
But our bond's only 25 million.
That's right.
That's really great news for us.
Yeah.
I mean, thank you all.
You bet.
Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Sorry, I have something to read. Sorry.
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Longview, Texas General Obligation Improvement Bonds, Series 2021, and approving all other matters related thereto.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I want to get that quick for that rating changes. Thanks, Mr. Martin, and thank you guys so much. Y'all be safe. We have a public hearing held to consider the City of Longview's redistricting plan. Mr. Bonds?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Everyone is aware that 2020 census has been turned in and the counts have been submitted to the city, and our population is now 80,638 compared to 10 years ago, 80,455. We'll go through quickly in a minute what this redistricting, what these counts mean. Redistricting ensures that we have equal populations in each district. So, right now, each of the six districts should have 13,606 compared to 10 years ago they needed to have is 13,409. The other thing that I'd like to point out is that the Department of Justice in the past had to approve the changes in the district boundaries, and this is no longer the case. The city council will have the final approval of redistricting. So, this is kind of a busy table, but if you'll take a second to look at it, this is where the counts were when we received them. The deviation is 26.84%, which means that we're at malapportioned. The deviation is calculated by taking the least populated district's population, subtracting that from the most populated district's population, and dividing it by the ideal population. So, that's how we get 26.84, and we're allowed by law to only have 10% deviation. You'll notice that the table that says DEV, that's the column, that's the goal, that all the districts deviation from the ideal population should be within plus or minus 5%. So, you see only two of the districts were inside 5%, four of the districts outside, and those percentages varied from 5.1% to 14.5%. We utilize Citygate GIS. That is a consulting firm that helps us to develop a redistricting map to achieve the goals based on the census data. So, a little bit about this company, for more than 30 years, Citygate has been providing information, technology, solutions. They've provided services to more than 40 state legislatures, hundreds of counties, utilities, cities, and municipalities in the U.S. and in Canada. So, this is the map that they developed. This map shows all the areas which changed districts, and I'll go into this a little bit more district by district, but all of the districts were impacted because all of the boundaries between the districts moved a little bit. So, this is District 1, has the smallest change. It added some of the territory south of Tenerville Road on the western edge of the city limits, and this area was formerly in District 5. Next, District 2. District 2 and 3 needed to change the most because they needed the most population. District 2 needed 696 people added to its district, while District 3 needed 1,968. So, this map is showing green areas are the areas that are being added to the district, red showing the districts subtracted from the district. So, a little bit about the map, it's hard to see, but some of the areas added to 2 would be the area around City Hall, the downtown area, the area north and east of downtown, including the Christus Good Shepherd Hospital area, if you will. The area shaded in red on this map indicates the areas removed from District 2 and as an area east of Green Street and north of Birdsong. So, District 3, again, has changed the most, and as in the previous map, green is add, red is takeaway. So, areas added are east of Green Street and north of Birdsong, that's the area we just showed that was removed from 2, and areas north of 80 from 6th Street to a point just inside of Harrison County following a drainage way, and then all of the area in Harrison County, south of Highway 80. So, the areas removed from District 3 are the areas of downtown, small area north of 80 from Old McCann Road to 6th Street, and an area west of Marbury, south to Cotton. So, that's District 3. District 4 lost quite a bit of area to District 3, but gained some from District 5. So, the areas lost to District 3 include an area north of 80 from 6th Street to that point just inside the Harrison County that follows that drainage way, and the area in Harrison County, south of 80. However, the area gained from District 5 is north of Hawkins and east of Judson Road. All right, so District 5 had the largest population and had to lose population to both Districts 1 and 4. So, the area it lost to 1 is that area we just talked about, south of Tenerville, and the area is north of Hawkins and east of Judson was added to District 4. So, lastly is District 6. It lost some area to District 2, but gained a small area from District 3. It added the area east of Old McCann and It added the area east of Old McCann and north of Highway 80, and lost this area around City Hall. So this is what the table looks like after redistricting, and you can see the deviations are, between each district and the ideal population are very close, varying from .21% to 1.53%, while the overall deviation, which is the population the largest, minus the population of the smallest, divided by the ideal population, the overall deviation is now 2.16%, well inside 10% goal. So this is what the new city maps look like. You must be familiar with what these look like with different color codes. So those are the maps that we'll be publishing. We'll keep all these web maps still on the city's website so that people will know what district they're in, and you may ask, well, how would I know what district I'm in if I've changed? Well, we will send you a new voter registration card if you're changed, and so you'll get a new card in the mail that'll tell you what district you're in. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you have past that point.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question, Mr. Bonds? First off, Keith, this has been a huge undertaking, and it's taken a lot of time. You all had, had a lot of input into where these district lines were drawn, and I know the consultant had a different idea, but I think you all's knowledge and basis of the city population was invaluable in this process. Otherwise, I think we could have drawn districts that we would have been very regretful of in the future when it comes to voting and placing council members, and so I think you all did a wonderful job of doing that and keeping the districts' demographic the way they should be. So I applaud you all. Very, very nice job. Any question, Mr. Bonds?
When will this take effect?
Take effect after this vote.
Tonight.
Tonight, after the vote.
Yes, sir. Make a motion.
This is the public hearing. Yes, sir?
Once again, Larry James Smith, 2306 Nixon Drive, Longview, Texas, in District 3. This may be a not appropriate question now, but I'd like to know through the SBA, what fundings will be supporting District 3 and District 2?
I don't have any idea, Larry, what.
Okay, then I'm going to do a little bit more research because I applied for a $2 million grant that was granted for an area. I'm still teaching and learning myself, and I'm picking all this information up as I go. There was a bond money, not bond money, let me, let me get that wrong. There was a $2 million grant for small businesses. I missed it by four hours. I had to take care of my house, but that money was there. I was, I was encouraged that my program that I laid out, it focused on the problems or focused on individuals and focused on the area that I live in, District 3, much more than anyone that ever submitted, and I was very proud that that person told me that. So if I had gotten in, I was assured that the $2 million would have helped me move forward in my nonprofit organization. So I will look into it, and I will reach out to all the council members, and I will email you of the monies that are going to be dispersed to all the districts and who can apply for that, those fundings. I will make sure that the program that I email you is legitimate, accurate, and well-intelligent displayed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Since no other discussion, the public hearing is now closed.
Do we do not do the ordinance next? We can go ahead and do this. The ordinance. Consider an ordinance to redistrict City of Longview.
Mr. Bonds.
Yeah, well, this is the ordinance that would adopt these maps.
Correct. Is there now a motion?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. We're now out of the community interest. Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. October the 30th, Mayor, thank you for the proclamation for the Elmira and Aaron T. Castleberry designation for the state historical marker. The marker's in, and it's up, and looks good. Great, great event. Moving on at Grecton, this next food pantry, this will be the Thursday before Thanksgiving. They're up to about 260 to 300 families. That will take place, I believe, on the 18th, if I had that right. And the last thing is Food for Fines. If everybody will participate, get those cans in and get those fines waived November the 1st through 23rd. And that's it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Snotty.
Good evening, everyone. There will be an online community meeting for Marbury Avenue Complete Street Project, 5:30 PM on Thursday, November 18th. Also, there will be a turkey and pie giveaway sponsored by L&amp;T Limo Service and Snotty Bells Buns on November 20th from 11 to 2 at 822 East Cotton Street. And just in FYI, Little League flag football is going amazingly well. My favorite part is watching the little girls outrun the little boys on flag football. They are amazing. Also, Happy Veterans Day, guys. Thank you so much to all veterans for their service. Thank you.
No, no, that's so funny. I can remember when my son played soccer, and the boys and girls played together for the first year.
Girls.
And he quit playing because he said the girls kicked me too hard. Mr. White.
I don't have a slide for this, but a couple of weeks ago, I was invited to take part in the 100th birthday of Mr. Purvis Paul Hagerty, who's a citizen of District 3, the Hagerty family. He's been a longtime resident here, and I wanted to recognize that family and thank them for inviting me out. And also, too, I would like to recognize all of the veterans who work within the city, our city employees, all of the veterans in District 3. We have Mr. Smith here today. Thank you for your service, and all the veterans here around the country.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Shihara.
Yes, I just wanted to encourage folks to visit the, visit Longview Marketplace that is now open downtown. They have some really great Longview gear. I am wearing my new Longview shirt, which can be purchased there. Got some really great Christmas gifts. They are open right now, Monday through Friday, 9 to 6 PM, and Saturday, 9 to 2 PM. And then it looks like the next slide here is their official ribbon cutting, which is Monday, November 29th, from 4:30 to 7:00 PM. But a really great place to go and get some Longview gear and help promote Longview with your clothing and other things, so go check it out.
Thank you. Mr. Wright.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Pertle.
Today is kind of a tough day for some of us. I'm one of the few in this room that missed by a few months going to Vietnam. Mr. Moore was there or close to it at the time, and Mr. Marshall talking about what he did, I think about all the stuff that, that I've had the opportunity to do or been given because of those folks. And I've known a lot of those guys that were a few years older than me that never came back, especially around Longview area. So I want to, you know, to tell them all thanks for what they did for me and a lot of other people in this room, because it's, it's real, it's realization, you know? And we've had a lot of that this last year on some other things, so I don't know if I told some of your stuff, Doc, but it's, it makes you think. So I appreciate all them people, that men and women that stepped up way before a lot of us in this room had the opportunity to do that or had to do that. And until you're laying on that line and you're in within a few hundred, a few numbers of being drafted, you don't think about that. And I was there, so it, it makes you think. So thank you.
Mr. Bonds.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As councils where I've been contemplating my retirement for some time, and after a 33-year, I didn't expect to see it, Richard, so municipal career, the last 22 here at Longview, I've decided to retire at the, at the end of January.
Wow.
All right, that's enough. See, see what working with Sean Harris done to me all these years. Well, I've been blessed to work with some wonderful, dedicated people and really make this community a great place to live. We are so fortunate to have an organization that is just filled with professionals, experts in their field, and that goes from the top of the organization to the bottom. And I'm most grateful for the support of you, Mayor Mack, and the rest of the city council for the confidence that you've placed in me these last four years. And it's really been the relationships that I've been able to form with, with you council members that's made my job easy and has allowed this organization to be as good as it's been. So thanks again, and I look forward to helping with the transition period of the next leadership here, so.
Mr. Bonds, thank Keith. Thank you. You've been an asset to this city for so many years. I can remember when I was on the council, you were in the engineering department, you know, you, you were always there. And I've always said, you're an engineer, and you guys are so smart, it kind of scares me, but you know, it's, it's black and white. There's no gray, you know? You don't have gray because you, your mind works in a different way. Except in your hair, yeah. I'm getting it too, don't worry. But you know, you, you've, you've always done things based on what's right, not what, what someone wants you to do. And I can remember when I was a councilperson, we had some times I didn't agree with you because I, you should have done it my way, but it wasn't the right way, and you, and you always, you always do what's right, and that speaks a lot for your character. And that's why it was a no-brainer when David left to bring you into this position, and you've done nothing but exemplify what we'd expect out of a city manager, and you've made this a wonderful thing for me because you make my job very, very easy, and I don't ever have to worry, I don't ever have to second guess when I ask you something, I know it's taken care of, and I appreciate that. I'm going to miss that a lot. I know you deserve to go on into the sunset, Keith. We'll miss you dearly. You've been an asset to this community, into this city, and you'll be very well, very well missed many, many years. So we thank you, and we look forward to you hanging out with us some and helping us, and I'm still going to call you, I do still call David, and so don't change your number if you do. I want a new one, okay?
I'll keep myself.
We really appreciate you so much. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Well, today is Veterans Day, where we take a moment to honor our military veterans for the service to our country. Are there any veterans in this audience tonight that are with us? I know Officer Bray is a veteran. Come on, step forward, Officer Bray. Interim Director of Information Systems, Josh Gamble, stand up. And Acting Director of Public Works, Dwayne Archer. Dwayne, is Dwayne in here? Judge Merriman is here. Thank you, sir. We, we just want to thank you for serving our country and doing it so selflessly and expecting nothing in return, because you get really nothing in return, and you should. So we appreciate what you've done, and we thank you for your service, and to all those veterans that have given their lives, the families that have just suffered through that, it does not go unnoticed, not in this chamber, anyway. So thank you very much, and we appreciate you more than you'll ever know. Thank you all. I had the privilege yesterday of giving my seventh State of the City address at the Longview Chamber of Commerce. If you'd like to see that rebroadcast, presentation will be on City View Municipal Television. Thanksgiving, city office will be closed on Thanksgiving, on Thursday and Friday, November 25th and 26th. Trash collection for Thursday customers will be collected on Friday, November 26th. With that, we will retire to executive session to discuss personal matters under Texas Government Code Section 551-074. Consider deliberation performance evaluations for city managers, city attorneys, city secretary, municipal judge. We will not reconvene once, once our executive session is over. Thank you.